Joint call, special call meeting with the Board of Elections and Voter Registration. Today on Monday, January sixth, three P. M. I'd like to call our meeting to order, and I'd like to turn it over to the Board of Elections Chair to call their meeting to order.
Good afternoon. At this time, the Henry County Board of Elections and Voter Registration is hereby called to order at three ten P. M.
Thank you. We've got some additional business that we need to take care of first before we move into our meeting with the Board of Elections. We are making two authority appointments early because they both have meetings this week. Starting off the new year, the Henry County Development Authority has a meeting tomorrow morning at eight A. M. So I would like to call for a motion to approve the Henry County Ward Authority appointments. Chair appointment is Fred Mays, District One appointment is Warren Holder, District Two appointment is Richard Silvia Junior, District Three is Lindsey McGarrett, District Four is John Blunt, and District Five is Mara Lot. Can I get a motion to approve these terms? Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries. Next item. Next item on the agenda is the Henry County Development Authority. Chair appointment is Charles Marshall, who will serve until twenty twenty-eight. District Two appointment is Pierre Clement, who will serve through December of twenty twenty-eight. And District Four appointment will be George Patterson, who will serve starting February first of twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. And District One, I'm sorry, I skipped over that one, District One David Crowe, who will also serve through December of twenty twenty-eight. So you have one, two, and four that will be serving four-year terms, and, no, Chair One and Two will be serving four-year terms, and District Four will be serving until December of twenty twenty-six. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries. So now we'll move into our Henry County Board of Elections and Registration Joint Meeting. I would like to ask our county attorney Serena Noel to come forward and explain the home rule provision in the Constitution.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Mister Vice Chair, Board members of the Board of Commissioners, Madam Chair, Mister Vice Chair, and members of the Board of Elections and Voter Registration. The, I'm gonna stand this way so my back isn't to either one of the boards. So the Georgia Constitution provides the manner in which counties can exercise what's called home rule authority, and it gives counties and municipalities the ability to make various ordinances and resolutions to govern their operations. It also gives counties the ability to amend or repeal local acts of the Georgia General Assembly, and it's this provision of the Georgia Constitution that the Board of Commissioners relies upon in order to make the proposed amendments to the Board of Elections and Registration ordinance. By way of background, the, there was a local act that was passed by the Georgia General Assembly, subsequently amended. Both of those acts were incorporated into the Henry County Code of Ordinances. So in addition to them being local acts, there are also county ordinances, and the county Board of Commissioners therefore has the authority to make any amendments to its ordinances that are in line with, you know, that comply with the law, obviously. So if there are any questions about that, or the actual constitutional provision is Article Nine, Section Two, and the specific provision that the county is relying upon in this instance is Paragraph One B. Paragraph One deals with home rule for counties, and Paragraph B dictates how amendments and repeals of local acts are accomplished. So if there are any questions, happy to answer them.
We'll take questions later in a minute, I just wanna keep moving through the agenda. Now I'd like to ask the county manager to come forward to respond to questions that were submitted by the Board of Elections. Each of you all should have a list here of questions that were submitted by the Board of Elections.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. I am in receipt of several items that were submitted to the board for questions that were posed by the Board of Elections, and so bear with me because what I will do is read the question and then provide a response, and then if you all have particular questions, I'll yield to answer those questions. So the first question, and it's a whole list, it just says below, "Questions and Concerns Regarding Henry County Ordinance Number Twenty-four dash one zero. Some items have been compared to Resolution Number Twenty-two-four dash oh-one of the Board of Elections, and please note that excerpts from the ordinance are followed by a question, concern, or request in red." So under Section three dash two dash fifty-seven point one four, item number fourteen, it states, "The Board shall fix and establish by appropriate resolution entered on its minutes directives governing the execution of matters within its jurisdiction. The Board shall hold regularly monthly meetings to be held at the offices of the Henry County Board of Elections and Voter Registration. Any special call meetings held pursuant to the bylaws adopted by the Board shall be held only after written notification of the time and place of such meeting has been communicated in writing to the person designated by the county governing authority to provide public information. All meetings of whatever kind of the Board shall be open to the public." So item number one. "The Board shall hold regularly monthly meetings to be held at the offices of the Henry County Board of Elections and Voter Registration. The question, concern, and/or issue that was raised is the following. The Board would like to know the reason for moving the meetings from the administration building as no explanation was given. There are concerns regarding the professionalism of the setup at the Elections Office. The county's response is the Elections Headquarters was intended to be the central hub for all things elections. It makes it easier on the constituents when everything is in the same location, and the Board of Elections, the Board members at that time were able to provide input on how the new building was to be laid out." For item number two. "Shall be held only after written notification of the time and place of such meeting has been communicated in writing to the person designated by the county governing authority to provide public information. The question raised, 'To clarify or make sure that the Board of Elections is following the county ordinance, please confirm the person designated by the Board of Commissioners.' The response, 'Meeting notices are handled by the county clerk.'" Under Section three dash two dash fifty-seven, number fifteen, it reads, "The Board shall, with approval of the majority of the governing authority of Henry County, appoint an election supervisor who shall generally supervise, direct, and control the administration of the affairs of the Board pursuant to the law in duly adopted resolutions of the Board. The election supervisor shall not be a member of the Board. The election supervisor shall be considered an employee of Henry County, and shall be entitled to the same benefits as other appointed employees of Henry County, and will report to the county manager. The election supervisor shall be subject to all personnel policies and procedures of Henry County. The election supervisor shall maintain regular office hours as directed by the governing authority of Henry County.'" Item number three. "The election supervisor will report to the county manager." The question or concern raised by the Board of Elections? There are concerns about a lack of impartiality given that the relationship of the county manager to the elected officials of the county, the B.O.C. This may not constitute a legal conflict of interest, but it does appear to be. The B.O.C. can have the appearance of being heavily persuasive over the Elections Office in the view of the public. Let it be noted that other counties have a structure where the Election Board employs and terminates the election supervisor, but they have a direct connection to H.R. and are subject to their policies and procedures." The county's response? Below is a breakdown of counties that we have reached out to regarding the reporting structure. The county of Fayette County, Lumpkin County, Wilkins County, White County, Habersham County, Jackson County, and Camden County have a structure in which their Board of Elections Supervisor reports to the county manager. Item number four. "The election supervisor shall maintain regular office hours as directed by the governing authority of Henry County." The question or issue raised by the Board of Elections? This statement refers to the governing authority of the county directing the office hours of the election supervisor. This section also states that the election supervisor is required to follow the personnel policies and procedures which all employees are subject to through H.R. Is the governing authority requiring and monitoring normal office hours? The election supervisor has to work beyond normal office hours during the election cycle process. For example, on Election Day, the election supervisor could begin at four thirty A. M. and may work until after midnight or even later. Please share the relevance of this statement and clarify the reference to the governing authority. Would the job description and expectations cover this?" The county's response? "This does not preclude work outside of normal working hours. It simply requires the election supervisor to regularly be in the office outside of the election season to handle operational needs and issues. It helps with communication with other government offices and the public." The next item is it states, "Upon indictment of any felony involving election fraud or moral turpitude, the election supervisor shall be terminated from the position immediately. Such vacancies shall be filled by the appointment of the governing authority of Henry County within ten business days following the occurrence of such vacancy." Item number five. "Upon indictment of any felony involving election fraud or moral turpitude, the election supervisor shall be terminated." The question and concern raised by the Election Board is as follows. "The Election Board suggests that this wording be changed to include the following due to other reasons that may occur resulting in termination. The election supervisor shall be subject to removal from office at any time for cause." Does the personnel policy and procedures of Henry County cover this statement which precludes the necessity of the statement? "The Elections Board would like to suggest that the governing authority receive a recommendation from the Board after a majority vote." County's response? "As a county employee, this individual would fall under the county's policies and procedures which covers termination. This statement is specifically addressing a potential issue that would allow for immediate termination upon indictment to safeguard the integrity of our election system." Item number six. "Such vacancies shall be filled by appointed, such vacancies shall be filled by appointed of the governing authority of Henry County within ten business days following the occurrence of such vacancy." The Board of Elections concern and question is as follows. "Does Henry County's human resources policies and procedures cover the appointment of an interim in the case of death, resignation, or removal from position? How long is the term for the appointed? Life, four-year terms, two terms? The Elections Board would prefer to be involved in the process of filling such vacancy just as in fifteen A., and this would show impartiality." The county's response? "Interim roles are covered in our county's H.R. policy, and an appointment is, let's see, and the appointment is based on until resignation or termination." The final item is, "The Board is authorized, with the approval of the governing authority of Henry County, to employ additional clerical assistants as needed to carry out the duties and functions of the Board." Under item number seven, "The Board is authorized, again with the approval of the governing authority of Henry County, to employ additional clerical assistants as needed to carry out the duties and functions of the Board. All such clerical assistants shall be considered to be employees of Henry County, and shall be entitled to the same benefits as other employees of Henry County. Any clerical assistants shall be subject to all personnel policies and procedures of Henry County." The Board of Elections question then concern is as follows. "The question is whether this is necessary given the existing method? Does clerical employee refer to or include poll workers? The county employee is aware that they are an employee, and poll workers are aware that they are not county employees who do not receive benefits? The lexicon of the clerical assistant requires clarification. The code only refers appointment of and training of poll workers, not clerical office staff, which is delegated to the election supervisor." The county's response is, "This is provided singular point of contact to keep the Board's documents, records, and processes in order and provide structure." Madam Chair, those are all of the questions that were raised with a response provided by county staff.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the board thus far?
I have a question. So, county manager, item number one, when they were talking about the very important meetings, and it was stated that the meeting should be in their administrative buildings, so the Elections Office, so to be transparent with our constituents, can they have the same, if we have to put funding, the same setup that they would have here with the live stream on our webpage or Facebook, or is that a setup that's done now? And if it's not, is that something that we can do to be transparent?
So, there's two parts to that. One part is the actual live streaming, that is certainly something that I can have our communications team work with the Board of Elections on, but I have also been in conversation with previous leadership on terms of what needs to happen at that facility so that they feel better about the setup, and so that is certainly something that we will work with the Board of Elections on, and I do believe in missing, correct me, we have already start looking at what that space needs to look like in terms of restructuring the layout of their meeting space.
Okay, 'cause that was only my concern, 'cause I like to watch their meetings, and if I can't be there, that's just like with the Board, B.O.C. meetings, so the constituents, our seniors, and everyone to be able to, you know, participate, to know what's going on, but I, I guess it's been a while, so hopefully we can expedite that, to see if we can get that taken care of.
Yes, ma'am.
And the one thing that I wanted to say with regards to moving from the administration building, we have our own meetings and a lot of times different special call meetings or different other meetings that I know that our county clerk keeps a calendar of events and meetings that we have in this space, and we need to be able to have our space when we need our space. Any other questions from the board? Commissioner Wilson?
Sure, you mentioned the comparison of Henry County to other counties that fall under the same structure. We've, in the past, we're always compared to a Hall County and Cherokee County because of the population and the way our government is structured. So what does Hall County and Cherokee County, how are they structured?
So I did not hear back from Hall or Cherokee County, but I will see as this meeting goes on if I can get an answer to that. The only other county that I've thought was, and it's not comparable in population, was Fayette County, which is about a hundred and twenty-four thousand, but I don't have one for Hall or Cherokee, but I will work to get an answer on that.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one question.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Robbins.
Um, 'cause I didn't know we were gonna discuss that, is this the time?
I mean, yeah, any questions that y'all have for?
Okay, because even as well as item number three, when we're talking about the setup with other counties and the election supervisor reporting to the county manager, my opinion of that, I feel that if we have a board that has been designated and they have put in the hours and time to oversee our elections when it comes to day-to-day operations for them, knowing that we have identified a building for them, they hold meetings for them to be transparent with our constituents, I feel that the control of trying to, if there's any problems, then that needs to be led by the board, the Elections Board, and then when it comes to our H.R., we need to make sure that they make their recommendations to the H.R., whatever that may be concerning the supervisor or staff, and then that way it'll come back to county manager to bring to the Board of Commissioners to know what their recommendations are, because I feel that they should have control over that, but that would be their recommendations to the H.R., and then the H.R. relaying that information to the county manager, and that kinda keeps everybody with checks and balances, to where it's not as if the county is having control. We have a board, right? And I think, how many people have been appointed to the board? Five, six, right? And I think they're five, and I think they're professional enough to be able to make those recommendations and make those decisions. That's, that's just where I stand on it, I don't know what my other colleagues, but I wanna be able to give them that, because if we're appointing people or if they've been appointed, then we need to at least allow them to exercise the ability to make those recommendations to us, and go through the process of what Henry County has in place. So if we have things in place of hiring and firing, then that can take place at that time, but I still wanna give that control back to the board, so that way they can make that recommendation in a unified, you know, as they, you know, submit it over to the county, the Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Anglin? I just, before I come to you, Commissioner Lewis, I had a question about the, can you name the counties again? That, I'm sorry. Can you name those counties again?
Yes, ma'am, I will name the ones that report, and then Chair, if you'd like, I also have some that don't report, but for comparison purposes. So for report to county manager, we have Fayette County, Lumpkin County, Wilkins County, White County, Habersham County, Jackson County, and Camden County. And then for those that report to Board of Elections, we have Lamar County, Mitchell County, Crawford County, Ware County, Dodge, Dawson, Putnam, and Murray Counties.
Okay, so, something was mentioning, excuse me, was mentioned about population. I don't think population has anything to do with it, because if you look at all these other counties that you named on their report to the Board of Elections, none of them compare to the size of, of, of our county. So I think it's just a matter of preference, whether it reports to the Board of Elections. The decision that we're making today is whether they report to the Board of Elections or whether they report to the county manager's office, and so population has nothing to do with it, it's really about procedure.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, thank you. Just had a couple things, and actually a lot of my thoughts mirror what Commissioner Robbins stated, and the reason, I'm just very big on impartiality. As citizens, I don't want our citizens to think that the election supervisor reports to someone who reports directly to the Board of Commissioners, because we are elected officials, and I don't, I think there has to be something in between elected officials and the people who run the elections. We, we have to, to have an air, especially in the land, the era that we live in, and there's so much negativity and, and people wondering if elections are, are clean, we need to make sure that we have some impartiality in the process. So I am in favor of the Board of Elections actually having the authority to recommend, in the employment realm and also in the termination realm, subject to the H.R. procedures of Henry County. H.R. does, does report to the, to the county manager, but I think the Elections Board, these are people that work with our election supervisor every day, they need to have some say-so in the process. So I do agree with, with Commissioner Robinson that I think the Elections Board needs to have the authority to recommend either employment and also termination, and then that recommendation would then come before to the county manager to present it to the Board of Commissioners for us to make a determination at that time, but we cannot take the Elections Board out of the process, so I just, I just wanna make sure that I'm on record stating that. That's it.
Commissioner Price? Okay. Sure, I have a question with regards to, and, and this might be a question, I guess, that maybe the Board of Elections would answer once they're given the opportunity to speak. that maybe the Board of Elections would answer once they're given the opportunity to speak. When we talk about qualifications, so if they are going to be following Henry County's policies, if they are a county employee, receiving county benefits, and are subject to county discipline or, you know, I guess the hiring and termination process, who comes up with the qualifications of that elections director? Is that something that HR will work with the Board of Elections on to create these qualifications? Do we already have, I see that we have HR in here. Do we already have a qualification process? Because before, or the way that it currently is right now, is that the Superior Court, the Chief Superior Court Judge hires and fires the election director. And he's an elected official that's making determination of who's being hired for the election director and who can be fired for the elections director. And that's been a policy that's been in place for a long time. It's an old and antiquated process that's in place. And so either way, at some point, you know, whether it's the Board of Elections, whether it's the Board of Commissioners, whether it's HR, whether it's the county manager, at some point, all of it still connects back to someone being elected. And so I just want to make sure that the qualifications are put in place for whoever that person is, regardless of whether the Board of Elections hires the person or whether HR hires the person, that qualifications are put in place and guidelines with our policy and procedures. So is that something that's already in place?
So I will have to defer to our HR team to determine that we have a job description for the HR director. You are correct Chair. In the past, the election supervisor was appointed by the Chief Superior Court Judge and it actually resulted in, I think, a team of three or four that actually selected. I do not believe that the Board of Elections was a part of that process either. I believe it may have been the Tax Commissioner, the State Court Clerk who has retired, and then there was one other individual, I just cannot remember who that individual was. But that is certainly something that if you all move to want us to look at that type of, developing a job description, we most certainly can. I also think it's important, because I think the reason we're here is because of the concern on the reporting structure. And so I want to be very, very specific in terms of saying the county got involved because of pitfalls throughout our elections process. And I think it's fair to say, most all of the board members that are sitting there has either reached out to me or a member of our staff because of issues at a polling location, issues that have come up. And so one of the things that you all have charged our team with is making sure that we have a fair election process and that if there are issues, we need to address them. So I'm going to say maybe last year, I assigned Shannon Sano to go over as a cluster lead and to help kind of coach, at that time, the election supervisor in terms of what needed to happen, how to respond if the media reached out, making sure that if we have errors, omissions, or if there's anything that we need to be concerned with, that we're notifying our board and that the Board of Elections is being notified. We identified holes in our, in the management piece of it, not in the election process. I want to be very clear in that no part of our election process would I say that, hey, there's some things that we need to go back and revisit. We've addressed those issues. But the only reason I'm standing here and Shannon is standing here is because we had issues. We had issues in the elections department that in my opinion, those issues weren't being handled in the manner in which they needed to be handled. That's no reflection on the Board of Elections, it's just the way that it was set up. And so today, when we stand here and we talk about who the person reports to, at the end of the day, I just want whoever it is to come in and do the job that they've been charged with doing. It's not a matter of them reporting to me as the county manager or reporting to the Board of Elections. But I will say this, whoever's going to have it, they have to have all of it. They have to own it, they have to address the media issues. Today, when the media reaches out, it's my staff giving a statement. And so we've got to make sure that we're going to have a clear line of demarcation in terms of who's responsible for what. I have no problem with us providing resources to the Board of Elections. I have no problem providing what they need. The county, we have run some successful elections in the last year and a half. We've ordered equipment, we've made sure things are in place. But this is not a job that we can decide if we're going to do part of it or all of it. Now, we have other boards in this county. We have our zoning advisory board that they are under our planning staff. But the planning staff, those are county employees. Those board members are appointed by the Board of Commissioners. You all have control over how zoning matters happen by the manner in which you vote. And so for me, if you say today, hey, we want this election supervisor to report to the Board of Elections, my staff is going to do whatever it takes to make sure we get them a good job description. We set them up with the processes that they need. But the staff does not report to the Board of Elections. And that's where, to me, we've got to get some clarification. You have your Board of Elections Supervisor, but all of those staff members are county employees. So their privileges and rights are a lot different than someone who's reporting to an appointed board because they're not bound by those same rules. Take, for example, we have John Self, who's our chief appraiser. He is appointed by a board, he is not bound by the county policies. And so that is very separate. His board appoints him, his board sets the salary. And if you all will remember, we brought forth a resolution to actually have him removed from our class and clump structure because he does report to a board. All I ask for is clarification. Because what we need to know is, if this person is reporting to the Board of Elections, what that structure looks like.
So when you say what that structure looks like, what are you referring to?
So in terms of hiring, firing, disciplinary action, salary, the whole structure, everything.
Okay, I think, let me go, Commissioner Wilson had his hand up.
Yes, I was going to piggyback on what Commissioner Robinson and Lewis said. But as far as the home rule, using that to amend any act by the general assembly, just because we can, don't mean we should. I mean, I get it that we can, but in this instance, I agree with Commissioner Robinson and Commissioner Lewis that the election supervisor should fall under the Board of Elections.
Commissioner Robinson?
I just want to, you said several things. One, that the supervisor will, has to go through the county HR policies, by the policies, correct?
Today, yes ma'am.
Right, okay. So is the reason why we can't keep it that way? Can we not have a county employee be the liaison, like say Ms. Sano, to be the county liaison, continue with the elections as the liaison? The person that is, again, receiving benefits through the county, correct? They're still receiving benefits? They're going to have to report to HR when their recommendation goes forth and it has to go through HR. And I guess I'm trying to say, as a county, we need to be able to say how, because we're putting, we put them in a building, right? So we got to still be able to say they're part of the county, they're not separate, right? Totally. So we have to be able to work with them to give them access to things they need. So just like I said, for as being transparent, to make sure that they have the meetings can be, you know, live streamed, we need to still be able to do that because that person still reports to HR. So that means they still are part of, as an county employee. Am I saying this correctly or I'm not?
So that's, I think that's where there's some confusion. No one reports to HR. And I think that's where there may be some confusion in terms of what you all have approved versus what I think I hear you all wanting.
So they're not, so they don't report to HR is what I'm saying to you? But they're still under the guidelines of what the structure is for HR? As an employee? So just say if the board makes their recommendation, they have written this employee up. Where does that go? It should go to our HR, correct?
That would be correct.
So if it, so if they have written, you know, because, you know, they can write up the employees, but where does it go? You know, and like you said, in the past, we know where it went and so we had to intervene. So to me, that's the only piece that I feel that we need to make the corrections on in order for this to work.
So that means you've got to change your personnel policy. Because your personnel policy does not grant any board the authority to handle any type of personnel transactions for employees of the county.
Right, and as I stated earlier, they are making the recommendation, right? The recommendation will come to you and then you will present it to the Board of Commissioners.
I think that...
So it doesn't lie, it's keeping the checks and balances. I mean, it may look like that, but, and I think that's why we're here. So we're trying to make sure that we, as a county, meaning even your department, because if you have a liaison that's there, you still know what's going on to also provide them the support or the tools from the county side that they may need. Other than them saying, well, we're over here, but we don't have any support from the county if we need it. I'm trying to see, how can we bring all that together? Because at the end of the day, it's still our elections board. Just like now, if we're trying to do it with the county manager or whoever, right? It's still going to lie within Henry County government, period. Henry County with making sure that we're transparent, everybody's looking at that. So my thing, again, what I'm trying to say and I've been saying, what can we do as the government to mend that gap? Because all it is is a gap. You have a board, a professional board, who can make the recommendation. You have the person who's coming in that has to follow the HR guidelines. They have to follow that, right? So when they submit their write-ups or their recommendations or whatever, it goes through HR. But if you have that liaison, county liaison person, then they can say, this is what's going on and they can bring that to you.
But that county liaison reports to the county manager. And as I understood, their concern was the role that the county manager plays as it pertains to the Board of Commissioners. So even if this board were to write up Sherri Matthews and it gets to HR and we disagree with the write-up, it gets to me and I say, well, no, this doesn't seem like it's in order.
Right.
Then who's the mediator there?
You're going to bring it to the BOC.
But we don't, we don't, the BOC should not be involved in personnel matters.
Well, not, okay, let me correct that. Let me just correct that, you're absolutely right. Then we need to put that back on the board. And we need to make, give them the authority to be able to make those decisions. And then that will cut out all of that. I still want to be able to give them the authority to be, that's just me, to be able to do that.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yeah, I just want to address two things. I know when you brought up the zoning advisory board and staff handles that, I guess the difference and the only reason I'm making a delineation is because it deals specific with elections and we're elected officials. I don't think, and I guess, I'm speaking for myself, I'm not going to speak for any other commissioner, but I just don't think as an elected official, I should have direct supervision over elections. You know, there has to be some delineation. I think what you're talking about is, basically at the end of the day, who controls or who is over this person? Who does this person report to? My only thing that I'm saying is, I think the Board of Elections should have some say-so. There should be something documented from the Board of Elections as to how this person is performing. In the end, it's still going to fall under the county manager. And I think that's where we're kind of missing it. But before I finish all that, I do want to hear from the Board of Elections because we're making all, we're having a whole conversation, it's a very one-sided conversation. I think we need to hear from the Board of Elections because there's probably some middle ground that we can get to if we actually hear what they have to say, if that's okay.
Commissioner Price?
Just sitting here listening to the conversations, I'm trying to take it all in. But are we saying that before now, there were no job qualifications listed?
No sir, there is a job description for the election supervisor.
Because I think that will be one of the first things that need to happen, ensuring that, you know, we get a quality, a qualified person to make sure that certain, you know, skills, if you will, are present or they have the ability to perform the job. And so I think that's, you know, is going to be a key component to that as well. And then, you know, I'm glad we're having this conversation because at the end of the day, we certainly need to make sure that we're transparent in everything that we do so that we can make sure that we keep the confidence of the people in our elections. And so I don't know how we're going to do it, but we're going to figure out a way, you know, to do it. But I'm with Commissioner Lewis that maybe we need to hear the thoughts of some of the election board members just to kind of see, you know, what their thinking is and how we can, you know, maybe come together to some kind of understanding.
So I'd like to ask the Chair to come forward and... Yes, come, yeah, come forward up here so we can make sure that... So Madam Chair, we are in receipt of all of your questions and you heard the county manager read the questions and answers into the record. Can you give us some, you've heard a lot of the questions that the various commissioners have asked. So can you give us, you know, your thoughts with regards to the Board of Elections position?
Okay, first of all, I'm Deidra Collins. I am currently serving as the Chair of the Henry County Board of Elections and voter registration. I want to thank Chair Harrell, the Board of Commissioners, for having this joint meeting with us. I do want to share a little background in regards to why we are actually here today. So thank you so much for obliging us and agreeing to meet with us. We wanted to have the meeting after we learned of the ordinance that was passed during your last meeting, I believe, in November. And whether you guys are aware of it or not, we had been working as a board, we actually came up with a resolution that we have put forward that we all signed. But it's in regarding this entire issue with the hiring and terminating of the person who's in the role of the election supervisor. And as Chair Harrell has already mentioned, the law that was in place, it did not serve the county well. And so this has been an issue that we've wanted to address for quite some time. And this particular fiscal year, our vice chair did the research and compared with other counties their structures. And like I said, prior to that, the question of how do we make a change? What do we do, what do we need to do? Because everybody's hands were tied in regards to moving forward. And with the old structure, like I said, it did not work with the county. So back to Vice Chair, he did research, compared to other counties their structure. And we looked at them, we compared them, and we came up with a plan for Henry County. And after we came up with our plan, we put it forth in a resolution, which we wanted the buy-in of the Board of Commissioners as well as the Henry County delegation. And thank you Attorney Noel for explaining the home rule, I believe. So thank you for that information. So at the time, we were not aware that really all we needed to do was present that information to you all, and that we could have had, um, a collaboration on what to do next, because we recognized there was a problem. And one of the things that the board has done, we implemented a review process for the election supervisor. And, um, we proceeded to have reviews with the Henry County, um, election supervisor, uh, director. I'm saying election supervisor, but we also call that person the Director of Elections. We did that in the hopes of having that person to evaluate their, what they were doing and their responsibilities, as well as the things that we were able to observe and see, so that we can have a collaborative effort in, um, making sure that the role is being carried out, um, to expectations for Henry County, to mitigate any, um, issues that may arise. And that's something that we were doing, but on our end, it really didn't get very far because the authority, the existing authority at Superior Court really would not accept or review our, um, review and recommendations that we had in regards to the elections, the Director of Elections. So we felt like our hands were tied, there's not much we can do, but try to work together to, um, to make sure that the role and the responsibilities were carried out at the level that it should have been, or that it should be. And so, going forward, for Henry County, for all of its citizens, and for, um, the Department of Elections, we want to continue to make sure that whoever serves in that role is, um, competent, able to get, uh, able to complete all the tasks that are involved in that role, and in, to the public's eye as well, where they can have confidence in our elections process. So, we all saw that there was a need for a change to be made. And like I said, we were working on our end, and obviously, there was some work being done on behalf of the county as well. And now we're at this point where those were our resolution and your ordinance. You know, there was no collaboration between the two, so hence, we are actually here today, um, because we saw your resolution, and we kinda went through it, and we had questions about it. So, it's not, um, it's not a fight for us on who's in charge of the election supervisor, that's not it. But we do work with the election supervisor. And we have collaborative roles here within the Department of Elections. Of course, we aren't paid employees of the county or anything like that. We're basically volunteers who agree to these positions to oversee elections. And some of the issues, or a lot of the issues that we are all aware of, it really boils, that really boils down to policies and procedures within elections, right? Following those standard of procedures that should have been in place to ensure that, um, the mistakes that did occur, um, do not happen. So, with the Board of Elections, the Bo- not the Board of Elections, but in the Department of Elections, we're working on those issues right now, to make sure that those things do not occur. And, um, it's not like we haven't said anything about that before. It's not like we haven't requested for standards of operations to be put in pro- to be put in place, so that the department can be successful. We're concerned about those things, but these things did not happen. And then, we want to have some type of level of, uh, disciplinary action and those things. But again, our hands were really tied. So again, we are here to try to, um, put some structure around that, that role accountability structure. And basically, again, this is why we're here. And as far as the supervisor reporting directly with us, it seemed like a logical way for that to occur, and that the board will then give their recommendations on what should be done. Vice Chair is also, he has experience in human resources. We've also come up with a disciplinary process for, um, the person in that role. But again, all of these efforts was so that we can ensure that the person who's doing the job will do it well and at a high level. If you don't mind, I would love to yield some of this discussion to our other board members who may have some input in regards to that. But I personally feel that it should be a collaborative effort, and not one where it is one-sided, or one where the board is not involved. I think the board should definitely be involved in the hiring process, making recommendations, as well as if it comes to a place where the person should, um, be terminated from that job, I think the board should also have a say in that as well. But again, we are here because there has been an existing problem with, um, with accountability in that role, and who that person actually reports to. And before, there was really no one for that person to report to. So, we want you guys to know that we want to work together and not separately, and that this is not a power struggle about who has the authority here.
Thank you, Ms. Collins, and, and, and we agree, the board wants to work with the Board of Elections as well. Um, we just want to make sure, I guess, from a standpoint, we really don't, we really don't want, want to do it, we don't. So, to oversee it, uh, it makes sense for the Board of Elections to oversee it. I guess the struggle that some of us are having comes with, you, you made the comment that you all have put some structures or policies or something in place. Does that coincide with our policies? And so, that is the concern that I would have, is that, um, whatever decision is made today for us, who has oversight, it has to align with our county policies. And, and, and that's the, the biggest thing for me, is it aligning with our county policy and procedures.
Yes, Chair, if I may, um, we have a plan. It hasn't been put in place, because this is all a work in process. But we do have a plan, and it's not a total structure yet. And the plan, or the structure that needs to be put in place, is something where we want to collaborate with county to make sure that we're all on the same page. Even in past years, when we started meeting with the then-HR director, um, we were doing everything in a collaborative way, to make sure when we were doing the reviews, that we had the right forms, that we were, we were, um, conducting those properly and in order with the county. We don't want to do anything outside of what Henry County has already established and, and put in place. We just want to make sure that whoever's in that role, that they're doing that job according, and meeting all those responsibilities, and fulfilling that, um, at their highest level. And if they can't fulfill it at their highest level, we wanted to provide a way to work with them, to get them to that level. But not to be a rogue agency, Department of Board. Everything that we want to do is to be in line with the state law for elections, and to be in line with the county. It's definitely, um, it's definitely what we want to work with the county, not like a separate unit. And it's not where we looking to do things, county manager, separately, where we are, where it's all or nothing. That is not the idea that we have. We really want to work together, and that it'll be a collaborative effort in overseeing the roles and responsibilities and accountability of whomever's in that position. And I think, I don't know that that structure is gonna be solved today.
Right.
I think it's worth us going back and working together. And so, this is really why we're here, because we really just want to work together to put a solution to the problem that existed.
Absolutely. That none of us had any oversight over.
That's right, that's right. And that's, that's the bottom line of why we're really here today, is to, to put a new structure over that process, so that we all can be on the same page, and so that the county, as far as elections is concerned, will, and the constituents of Henry County, will feel good about who we have there, we have accountability in place, and that we're gonna carry out, um, the elections process with integrity and in order, and transparency. And we don't want to have the look of, um, impartiality. We want it to look fair.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you so much. Uh, you want to invite your board members up to speak?
Yes, Vice Chair.
Do I need to come over?
Yes, come, will you come up, please?
Madam Chair of Henry County, Madam Chair of the Board of Elections, and to the members of the Board of Commissioners, and to the members of the Board of Elections, and to the public. Thank you again for this opportunity. Uh, I can echo a lot of things that our Chair stated. Uh, there are a couple of things that I would just like to restate, but most of it is ditto. And that is, I, I can't help but to remind folks that we are not county employees. We're volunteers. We're volunteers who work with a lot of passion to ensure that we can fulfill the duties for the voters of this county and to the citizens. And therefore, we're simply seeking a transparent process so that there's no question about how elections are done in Henry County. We also are seeking a impartial process to te- to protect everyone that's involved. For us, it really doesn't matter where the person reports. We just have some belief that to provide the greatest transparency and impartiality, that, where that person should be. I would also just like to make a, a minor correction, is that I was not a lone star working on the resolution or anything else. I was actually partnered with Board Member Finney. She and I worked under the, uh, appointment to work on the resolution, to work on the HR policies at, under the direction of the Chair. So it wasn't where we were rogue, and we were out doing something individually. We actually did that under her leadership and her appointment. We also were collaborative. Some of the policies that we were talking about in terms of how other counties, uh, report, the county government, the county manager's office, someone in that office actually did some open records request for us, to help us know that Hall County is the structure where the person reports directly to the Board of Elections. Spalding County is exactly the same. We also did some work on our own to reach out to members of the Boards of Elections, and we got information as well. We took all of that information. And we, it did take us a moment to get to a point to where we came to a resolution. And that was because we were talking amongst ourselves, trying to decide what would be the best reporting structure to support transparency and impartiality. And let me also just go on the record to say that it wasn't actually until after I myself had a conversation with some of our legislators, who gave me the advice to stated that, Dan, tell your board that we really don't care how it works in other counties. We want you guys to do what's best always for Henry County and Henry County voters. And it was only after that conversation, and I took back to the board. And at that point, we had like six or seven different reporting structure, and people could add more, that the board came forth in a matter of days to say, yes, this is the way, this resolution will be best for the county of Henry. That's how we came up with it. We are not any board, or we're not rogue members who are trying to carry out individual agendas. It's very simple. What the law states, and way we understand it, information that we get, we want to make sure that we do exactly that without deviation for the citizens of this county. Because doing that proves that we're transparent, and we are impartial, and we're gonna do the right thing when people are looking, and when people are not looking. We're always trying to do the best. So, I will yield and allow other board members to speak, if that is at the pleasure of the Chair.
Absolutely, um, um, I know that, um... We have Ms. Omega, who we have had long conversations over the years about this Board of Elections, so, uh, good evening.
Good afternoon, everyone, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, to our other board members, and Chair, Vice Chair, um, everyone. My name is Omega Finney, I'm a board member of the, um, Henry County Elections Board and Voter Registration. Um, I don't have much to add to what Vice Chair and Chair said. Um, just want to reiterate that we did a lot of research, um, to come up with that resolution, because we all know and felt that our hands were tied, that we weren't able to provide at the highest level elections here for, um, voters here in Henry County. Um, and I also want to reiterate and thank, um, Ms. Sanio and, um, Sherry, the county manager, they did help us do that research. They did help us get to the point where we were able to come together and create a resolution to provide the best structure for Henry County. And I, I do want to reiterate too, that, to the county manager, what, what we're really asking for is for us to have input on who the election supervisor is, and because we work with them. We work with that person, we want to know someone that's gonna come in, like Chair said, that's gonna be competent, um, that's going to put transparency and make sure they follow the laws. Not only do we have to follow state laws, we have an election code book that's this thick, and we also have to make sure we follow federal laws. So that's, that's what we want to do. We want that person, um, to have input from us to who the election supervisor is, whether it's hiring or terminating. But we also want them to adhere to the HR policies and procedures. Um, previously, when I was Chair and Deidra was Vice Chair, we've worked a lot with HR, even when it came to an Assistant Director, to any of the supervisors. So we have experience working with creating qualifications for, um, for a position in the Elections Department. So I just wanted to reiterate and thank you all for meeting with us, for listening to us, for taking our phone calls, because we get a lot of phone calls from our voters, and they want and expect us to be transparent and to have fair elections. So I just want to tell you thank you again. And again, I can't say enough for, um, Cluster Lee Sanio. She has just come over to the Election Department and just moved in. And I don't know how we would have gotten through that last election without her and our great staff, and Lee, our Assistant Director. So, uh, does anybody have any questions before I sit down?
Uh, uh, go ahead, Commissioner Roberts.
So with that being said, having, having a liaison to moving forward, would that also be helpful to you all?
I would say yes. I also want to reiterate that, and we shared this at our last meeting, that we realize that we have a competent person in place now. I have all the, I think that Lee has the ability to lead that department, and along with Cluster Lee Sanio. So as we move into this new era in the Elections Department, we all realize on the Board that we're not going to have to have as much hands-on input into the Elections Department as it continues to grow and improve. I do think a liaison would be helpful. However, I would like for us to look and think to the future that we may not need a liaison in the Elections Department, because we have the staff that are competent and that can lead that department. However, I do think during the transition, having Cluster Lee Sanio as a liaison is a humongous help, because I know they're working hard to clean up things in the department.
I agree with you. I do agree with you. And, and I just want to thank you all for having the passion and conviction to want to do what's right. Because, you know, if we can't depend on our, the integrity of our elections, then, you know, it, it, it's just not right. And so, you know, at the end of the day, we want to make sure that we're doing, because we get the phone calls too, when things don't go right. And so, you know, and it kind of puts us in a position, because we are elected officials, and you have constituents that are calling, that are saying that this is not happening, or, you know, the machines are down, or, you know, whatever that problem or issue may be. And, you know, as great Shannon has done an amazing job in being that liaison, but we do want to get you to the point where you have a, you know, director that, you know, calls us when she needs us, you know, and we will always be here. So, I just want to thank you all publicly for everything that you all do.
Thank you so much. And I do want to say again that I do believe that this Elections Department, we will have and see a future where we won't need a liaison like Shannon to intercede, that we will, you won't get those phone calls when something is wrong, you'll get a phone call and say, that was a great election, that party did a great job, and we didn't have any problems and the line moved faster than 10 minutes. Thank you.
Yes, that would be ideal. But we do know with the constituents out there and the people looking for reasons to complain, that those will happen, but overall, elections will go smoothly. I do want to iterate that Shannon Sanio has been doing a good job in working with our Assistant Director, Lee Phillips. They are a dynamic duo right now, and getting our department where it needs to be. We have department goals of getting SOPs in place. Like I said, a lot of what has happened was the result of not having them in place. And with them on the team and us working together, you will see any, all the issues go down significantly. So...
So I, I have a question. So this year, we have the elections coming up for municipal.
That's correct.
And, and so for that process, which, you know, it would be the municipal elections, it's, it's, it's not county elections, but when does your process start for preparing for those municipal elections? Because we too get the complaints on the municipal side with regards to, you know, people having to go to this location for one thing to vote, and go to another location to vote. And so, when, when does that process start with preparing for the municipal elections?
Actually, the process actually starts now. Elections really doesn't get a break, going from one cycle to the next. And so, the meetings with the, with the city clerks, those things need to start happening, and they already have an agenda scheduled to meet with them, to make sure that we are all on the same page. There are numerous things that has to be done ahead of time. I believe the process began in August, but for elections, the Department of Elections, it actually starts now with all of the planning that has to take place.
I would, I would also add that the, the complaint that you got about having to go to multiple places, we've been working on this close to two years. And I believe the last city that we are waiting on is the City of McDonough. Because the cities, as a Board of Elections, we do not have the authority to combine precincts into municipals. The cities have to do that. So I'm, I'm very proud to say that Stockbridge stepped up and did it, Hampton already did it, had already done it, Locust Grove, and we're now working on the City of McDonough. So you should not hear anything as long as we can get the City of McDonough done before the municipals, but the other cities, they can go to one place and vote for county and city. So like Chair said, it doesn't stop. We've been working on this for two years so that we can prepare, and we'll start talking about this at our meeting on Wednesday. Even start looking at, do we need to start preparing for the early voting hours, things like that? So it doesn't stop. Thank you.
And let me, let me just add also, many times, the preparation starts once a bill is signed by the Governor. Such as this year, the PSC election will be across the state. Every position is up for reelection. We have already, along with Attorney Noel, have already looked at that legislation and dissected to make sure that we can prepare for the election.
And just for clarity, what Board Member Finney was just speaking about, that was aligning the municipalities with the county when it comes to voting at the precincts. Because the municipalities would have one polling place, and the county had another, and voters would have to go to two different locations to vote. And that's been part of our mission, because we heard the voice or the cry of the citizens of Henry County. And that's what, where we've been working to get those aligned. And like she said, the municipality that remains is the City of McDonough.
I also wanted to just go back to a couple of things that were said earlier regarding the, the steps that the Board of Elections made when we were under, before the ordinance. The Performance Eval, us working on a way to discipline the election supervisor, those were things that we did, because we felt like we had no other option to do that. We did use Henry County Human Resources policy to align that. However, with the ordinance in place, and even with the modifications that we make, we can rely on Henry County's policies and procedures that are already in place, that are already being implemented, and that are already being used by Henry County employees. So I just wanted to make sure you understood, that was the reason why we added the Performance Eval to our bylaws, and also started working on any kind of way that we can discipline the election supervisor. Thank you.
Chair Harrell, do you have any other questions at this time, before we move through the rest of the document? Okay. I would like, if you don't mind, to ask my other Board Members if they had any comments.
That's fine.
Okay, they do not at this time, so I'll take my seat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to also acknowledge our incoming newly-elected State Representative, Ms. Noel. Would you like to come up and say anything to us? Thank you for being here.
Hello. Thank you for all this information. It's really important for the voters and the citizens of the county, and thank you, Chair Harrell, and Vice Chair Wilson, and all the employees and workers that have done so much. I'm really impressed to hear all the research that has gone into this. People don't realize that our Boards are volunteers. And to put your heart and soul into that is really impressive. And I know my, Angie, our deceased, past Angie Steltzer, was so proud to be part of this Board also. I know that there's some legislation that's actually effective, January 1st, 2025, for counties that have not yet created a Board of Elections. And it is Section 21-2, maybe Attorney Noel can, can look at that. 21-2, I've got the number for you right now, dash 40.1L, gives you some information, because I know that continuity is, in state code and local ordinances, give a lot of confidence to voters. So Section L says, a Board, this is the Board of Elections, is authorized to select and appoint an administrative director to be known as the election supervisor, and the election supervisor shall serve at the pleasure of the Board. And there's also a Section M, which you were discussing, the Board is authorized to employ such full-time and part-time employees, including a chief clerk. It sounds like that would be something like a liaison. So there's language like that already in state code, if you want to borrow from it, but I'm super excited to be able to serve the constituents and help in any way I can.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. So, County Attorney Noel, I've got a couple of questions. It appears, and my Board can correct me if I'm overstepping, that we need to make some changes to this amendment. And those changes would be where the, it says the election supervisor shall be considered. So I'm, I'm looking at Section 3-2, Section 3 dash 2 dash 57.15, and it's 15A. The Board shall, with approval of majority of the governing authority of Henry County, appoint an election supervisor. If that was to be changed to the Board of Elections, then we would have to reword this entire paragraph, correct?
So this paragraph, the reference to Board, little b Board, is actually to the Board of Elections.
Oh, so that is to the Board of Elections?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I may, Chair, and the language that follows, where it speaks to approval of a majority of the governing authority, that's approval of a majority of the Board of Commissioners.
So, okay. Chair Collins, I think this is where I need your help. Okay. You, you all are asking for the Board of Elections to, I guess, appoint the election supervisor, is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So, so you all would appoint, and what else? I guess, I, I guess I'm trying to get a full understanding of what your ask is.
Okay. So in this particular paragraph, further in the paragraph, it says, this is where we were, our flag raised, where it says that, that the election supervisor will report to the county manager.
Okay. And so you would like for it to say what?
That they will report to the Board of Elections.
Okay.
And Chair, and Chair Harrell, if I may, the recommendation from Representative Kane, sorry, I apologize, I forgot your last name, I think the verbiage that she shared could be a template for us to use in this, in this amendment.
Which verbiage?
I don't have any from...
Could I get a copy of, of that? Or?
And basically, what that would do, it would say that the supervisor would be selected and appointed by this Board, and would report to this Board, but the, we would still be able to rely on the county HR administrative things to, to kind of manage the process. And think about it for a second. With us, as with any employee, you must maintain a file for that employee. We as a group of volunteers cannot maintain that file, so we would need to be able to send those documents to HR to be put into that employee's file. So those are the type of things that we're speaking of. And as the State Representative pointed out, is all of this is very consistent with the recent change to where the, the probate judge was removed from the process, and in all of those instances across the state, they're set up in the exact same manner that we're asking for you to consider. And that's the reason why Board Member Finney said that that language could be perhaps effective.
So let me ask this question. Would the Board of Elections take issue or have a problem with a member from HR being part of the process?
Not at all. I was just about to bring more clarity to that, to say, we would not do this without HR present. And when we had our reviews in the past, we had the H, the Human Resource Director there, we had Director Sanio there, and we've even had city manager present at a time. So we would definitely not do this without having the county be involved in that way.
Okay. So, if we make these changes, is, is everything else amenable to?
I think we may have just a couple of other things that we want to visit.
Okay.
Before we complete the changes to go into the ordinance.
Okay.
Madam Chair, my recommendation would be to let's either hold or pull the current ordinance, and start the process over again, once we have the final changes from both Boards. Because we'll have to go through, we'll have to go through a publication process, and we want to make sure the publication is accurate, that it accurately reflects the text of the amendment.
Okay. Is this something that we can get done by next Board meeting? Our, our next Board meeting, which would be the 21st?
I can have a draft prepared to appear on the next agenda, as long as the two Boards collaborate and give me the information I need.
And, and Madam Chair, I would just like to say, this group of volunteers, we will do the work, to make sure we get you what you need.
Okay.
Excellent.
Is, so, let's look at if it's okay with the Board, my Board here, that we table this until the next Board meeting on the 21st, give time enough to make some adjustments, and then, from that standpoint, we will be able to... And then from that standpoint, we would be able to approve it, have it advertised for two meetings correctly?
That's correct. Well, three, it has to be advertised for three consecutive weeks before final adoption.
Okay, okay.
So that will push final adoption to February 4th, I believe.
Okay. I'm just trying to get it in before you really start your processes with the municipal elections so that we can have things in place and be able to move forward with, you know, having things in place. So what I would like to see maybe is if, I guess Chair Collins, you and I and, and I guess your Vice Chair, whoever from your board, as long as it's not a horn, that maybe we can do a meeting via Zoom or something? Because I know everybody's schedule is crazy. And then I can get a couple of members, get my Vice Chair and maybe another board member to be, you know, engaged along with the County Attorney. And I definitely would like to have HR and the County Manager or Deputy County Manager as part of this meeting so we can get this final, you know, ordinance adopted and we can just move forward and concentrate on running, continuing to run fair, transparent elections in Henry County.
Yes, Chair, we'll definitely be available to do that.
Okay. Is that good with this board? Is that good with this board? Okay, all right. So having that, we're gonna table it until the 21st, get the changes done and bring it back. And we look forward to working with everyone. Can I get a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Madam Chair, the ordinance is actually on tomorrow's agenda.
Okay.
So you'll need to make that motion tomorrow.
Okay, all right. Well, I just, okay, that's fine. Well, outside of that, meeting is adjourned. Thank everyone for coming out.
And the Henry County, and the Henry County Board of Elections and voter registration meeting is hereby adjourned.